Where we start the questions.
Hello, Maryann.
Hello. Nice to meet you.
This is Kate. I just wondered, anybody have any questions? For Maryann?
No, I just wanted confirmation, you said fifty-nine people in Oxford who immigrants?
Yeah, fifty-nine, five-nine. Yeah, this number, this number is only permanent residents or people who are red, applied for permanent residence. It doesn't include, include temporary workers. So this number can be much more.
And that's children and adults?
Adults and kids.
Do people have to reach out to you, or do you find that new people are coming, you reach out to them?
Normally, they, they spread the word. And in the beginning, it was more the company, the frozen food that sent me the, the people and the information when they needed some assessment or some settlement plans, for example. And between them, they start to spreading that Mariana can help you, Mariana can help you with this, that, and that's what happened. Now, I think they know a little bit where can, today I had a call from someone that I didn't know. And she starts saying like if I know her, and I realized that I didn't know, so yeah.
So you have fifty-nine clients, but we could have more newcomers to Oxford and they haven't reached out to you yet.
Sorry, I didn't, the audio is not good and I didn't understand.
So you have fifty-nine clients, but we could have more newcomers that haven't reached out to you yet.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Anybody else get any questions? Well, I would like to thank you for the informative information that you gave us, Maryann.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I'd like to move on to the total of the minutes for previous meetings, that's the October eleventh, twenty-three. Hearing no errors or misses, I wear the minutes as well. We'll move on to attending the programs. And we'll share the public works, Nick Burden presented.
Thank you. The other words team completed the following tasks for the month of October. Weekly garbage pickups, monthly balloon samples, winter prep work, landscaping at the sun path. We also installed a new sewer pump at the main street of the fish. Asphalt patching on Water Street, Virgin Road and Crescent Avenue. Home number two at the well fields, interview pump and also pipe installs. Auto maintenance is going to start next week. And also installed a new two-minute water line on Lower Road November sixth.
Anybody get any questions for Mr. Bird?
No. Sorry. We discussed it earlier, so.
I thank you for your report. Yeah, I'd like to move on to the fire report, the monthly call report, Chief Bruce question.
Members of the department have been pretty busy this year. We've had a total of hundred and twenty-eight calls as of last night.
I don't think this will pick you up. You want to take a break?
Sure.
You know, sorry.
Thank you. So members have been pretty busy this year. We've responded to a hundred and twenty-eight calls as of last night. Several members also created a fire prevention video, which they shared with each other from the school on two different occasions at the fire station, did an excellent job. We also went to the school for a fire drill and a bit of a tour of the school, which was very helpful. Kyle and I would thank firefighters for their ongoing dedication and support to the fire department, the town, and residents that we serve. Emergency calls for the month of October, we've had one MVA, four medical-related calls, three structural fires, one brush or woods fire, and one fire alarm. Five of these calls were in town, three calls in our coverage area, and two were mutually called with sister neighboring departments. On an average, we had seventeen members responding to these calls with an average of ten actually on the scene. We currently have approximately thirty, I think it's thirty members that we have. One of our structural fires we had in our district, excited how many three neighboring departments assisting us. And everybody, just all the members from the, all the different departments all work well together, just like we're all one department. So it's great to have that cooperation. During the last month, I represented the fire department while attending EMO training in Turo, and also attended the air and fire department annual banquet and awards night. They also reported that their calls were up this year, like three hundred and thirty-nine or forty-nine for the year. And they actually get four members that attended every call. Yeah. Just a quick update on our generator installation that's coming along. And hopefully we'll have that completed within the next week or two, just wait down the electrical, everything else is in place. And we also completed a submission to the government for funding assistance for improvements to the comfort center that is going to be at the fire station. Some of these upgrades could be to kitchens, proper seating and chairs, some coolings to the main area, and some power upgrades. And that's it for me, thank you.
Anybody need any questions for our chief?
Rush. I have one quick question.
Yes.
I just want to ask your roster, though.
Great.
Good?
Yeah, no, we're doing okay there. We've had at least three new members in the last while, and they are participating in level-one training right now in fire wash, which is quite a commitment. Full weekends, every two to three weeks, I'm getting in the mix, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Whoever looks after your Facebook account does a good job. Kind of set that, that's fair. If anybody, are we on Facebook? Are we going live?
No, we're not live, but we will. This will be on.
Okay. If anyone doesn't follow them, you should. It's a good follow, and today's post was really nice. I don't know if you've seen it yet, and they'll ever post it, but it was a picture of all of the shoes when firefighters run in and they take off their shoes.
Right.
It could be flip-up, it could be whatever, and they're into the fire and everyone, you know, hopefully they'll be safe so they can get back to their shoes. Anyway, it was very nice.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'd like to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to Jimmy Ward, which is a municipal physical activity leader.
Good evening, everybody, thank you. First, I'd like to touch base on the walking wheel project. I've been working with the usual business community leaders, well, the group. You'll see in your package my submission for funding, active communities fund, eight thousand nine hundred dollars, which was estimated through Peach to complete their proposal. IRN would have to cover one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is all fully covered just by contributions made by our own working time, public works, myself, committees. We don't have to actually have anything come out of our own pockets. Upon approval of this funding, Peach will be coming to Oxford for a bunch of communities assessments to see exactly what we should do to move forward with this project. And a final report and video summary will be available, and we're hoping to have that by March. In October, we had a scarecrow contest for Halloween. Local businesses and community members put up scarecrows displayed around town. And from October sixteenth to twenty-seventh, take part in our contest. And the town looked amazing, so I'd say thank you to everybody who decorated. It was a huge success and fun, and congratulations to the shade rest care facility and Nancy Erickson for our winnership. We also had a Halloween costume swap. We had people donating any Halloween costumes that they had sitting around the house, and this was also a huge success. We had plenty more costumes than we actually needed to hand out. I'd say we had between probably fifty to sixty people come and get the precautions. We handed those out at Fire Hall on October eighteenth.
We'll definitely be doing it again next.
Definitely doing it, it was a great success. Soon as six o'clock came around, people started showing up, it was really good. Pickleball and basketball is happening at the schools, not this Monday, because it's November's Day. That's from eight till nine P M. every day, every Monday. And it's a two-dollar drop-in fee, anybody can go, no experience is necessary. And community game nights at the Nazarene Church happen every Friday, or sort of every last Friday of the month. At six-thirty P M., you can bring your own games and bring some snacks for everybody to share and enjoy. Our Oxford walking group has a new date or new day. They've added Monday mornings at eleven A M. as well as their original Wednesdays at six P M. Typically, these walks take about thirty to forty-five minutes, depending on who's there kind of thing, and they all stick together. It's a gentle, easy walk, everybody, and it's free as well, anybody can go, just join it. Stay after it. Top of the middle of our Christmas parade coming up, so our eighteenth annual Christmas parade, it's coming very quickly. This year will be on November twenty-fourth at six P M. We have a rain, six-thirty P M., sorry, thank you. And we have a rainy date on the twenty-fifth if needed. In your, in your county packages, you have the attachments there, a poster, our letters to the businesses, guidelines, the registration forms as well. If anybody is looking for registration forms, they're here at Town Hall as well as on our website. And the deadline is November twenty-second for meetings. Please note that by law states you're not allowed to hand out any candy or treats to be tossed or handed out during the parade. So this is to ensure the safety of everyone. If you have candy that you want to hand out, reach out to Chris or McDuck, nine oh two six nine four four zero three two, or C M C N U T T at Oxford N S dot C A. She'll be helping to help you with your questions on that. Oxford's Wilburn Lodge, if I pronounced it right, Winburn Lodge, if I pronounced that right. They will also have a food truck at the gazebo on the night of the parade. They'll be handing out free hot chocolate and free hot dogs to everybody. Following the parade, you can make your way to the arena to see Santa and have your pictures taken. There'll be a pre-skate as well, and that's will be from seven till eight P M. And volunteers, we need people. We're still looking for volunteers to help current offerings, as well as anybody looking to start up anything new within their community. So it can be anything, let's say scouts or cadets or dance classes or whatever, maybe. We need people who are willing to actually lead the things and help us out those. Yeah, and that's it.
Anybody get any questions from Mr. Ward? Questions, I'd like to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And move on to administration department report. Linda, Linda, present.
Thank you, thank you, Arnold. Deputy Mayor, I should say. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, great, great. So we want to start off with, we attended the EMO information session in Turo, and as our chief Rushton mentioned, he was in attendance, as well as myself and public works supervisor and our administrative assistant. So we all attended in Turo, it was very informative. We got back and then we met with Steve Wood, our EMO coordinator, myself and deputy mayor McDonald there. And we had a great conversation the other day as well, just getting our comfort centers together and just getting the checklist all put together. So more work to be done and getting in the season as winter is fast approaching here with us. Also, recently, myself and our admin assistant attended the Robert Rules of Order refresher session in Port Hoxbury. Learned lots of great things, as you see, for an example tonight, as we've changed up the chairing of the committee of the halls and just, just different things to modernize our council meetings and proceedings. So we've been working hard on that. There's still more changes to be made, but we're slowly implementing those. The third quarter water bills have been mailed out. The accessibility, I will be touching on that here in a moment, under committees and boards. But the accessibility report card was drafted by our administrative assistant, which he did a great job. And so we're implementing those, and I'll discuss that a little bit further in our next session. Also, in our billing department, first of all, they want to say thank you to all the residents that have caught up in their arrears. It makes a huge difference to the town's cash flow and ability to operate efficiently. So the administrative staff has reviewed the standing property taxes for twenty-three and twenty-four. A hundred and forty-two arrear notices were mailed out in October twenty-twenty-three. The payment was due September thirtieth for the tax year ending of March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Property taxpayers with current year arrears were sent in a rear notice. Twenty-eights out of those twenty-eight preliminary notices were mailed out on October thirteenth. Payments is due December thirteenth of twenty-twenty-three. Property taxpayers that owe the current year in part or all prior year taxes are in tax sale status and are to be given a preliminary notice, giving them sixty days, calendar days to pay. Property taxpayers that are currently in a negotiated payment plan were not sent notices unless revisions were required. So that's an update on our property taxes for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, as we're looking through the tax sale process. Now, to speak about our outstanding water taxes for twenty-twenty-three, we have some deadlines coming up on that as well. September eighth of twenty-twenty-three, all accounts were reviewed, and we noted in arrears, there was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five outstanding. Six statements of arrears were mailed out to residents with more than ninety days owing. And forty of the fifty-six statements had a warning to avoid a disconnect notice paid by October thirteenth. Those residents had more than two hundred owing and more, more than ninety days in arrears. Three of the forty were paid in full by October thirtieth. So going down further, November first, so, um, November first, first, sorry, nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine are in arrears with the water. So another review on the accounts. Thirty-one notices were sent with the quarterly water bills for July to September, so the bills that just went out. There were fourteen notices of intention to disconnect. Arrears must be paid in full within the five business days. The account balances will be checked on November ninth, which is this coming Friday. And then the next day, public works will disconnect those residents who have not paid the arrears. The notices have been sent out, so if you're in that category, please pay those balances up before, by Friday. Also, seventeen notices have been sent out to avoid an intention to disconnect. They must pay the arrears in full by November thirtieth. So there's, then, there the intention to disconnect notices will be sent out after the account is checked on the first week of December. So those are the updates for the administration departments.
Does anybody have any questions for Linda? Well, if you got no questions, I'd like to, I'd like to thank all the town departments for the respective reports, and I'd like to move on to.
I'd like to move on, we accept those reports that submitted. Only.
I'll second that.
I don't think we have, according to, no, not that, it's right here, new rules. Okay, sorry, that's all right.
That's okay, all we need to do, just to clarify, all we need to do now is to thank for the reports.
Okay. I'll second that, too.
That's all I meant.
Well, I'd like to move on to the reports to the committees and board. Linda, you're presenting all the reports.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on our reports, I have accessibility advisory committee. We had met just recently, and in the council package is a copy of the, the minutes that were accepted at our Septembers, sorry, in our October meeting. And so, so you can get an idea of what, what's being discussed, what the content of our meetings are. We are looking for more members as well, so I'm putting a plug in, just like Recreation Commission. We need members as well on our accessibility commission, committee as well. We're starting now to get into the, now we got our plans all put together, now we are working on the grounds. So what we're doing now is taking that great report card that our administration assistant put together for us, and they, as in the committee members, not municipal staff or councillors, the, the other members are going to all the municipal properties and assessing them for accessibility. So we have a report card that's going to come back assessing like our ball field, our arena, our theater, our gazebo, the soccer field, all those areas that are owned by the town will be reported on. So just to note that we are looking for more members. If anyone is interested, please contact the town office and, and we could, or even come and attend an upcoming meeting. We'll post those out when the next dates are, but right now, actually, the next dates are working in the field. So they would, but we would welcome more members to join the committee. So that's all I have to report on that.
Anybody have any questions for Linda? If not, I'd like to thank you, Linda, for your respective reports, and I'd like to move on to the number seven. Item description corresponds, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor. So attached in the council package, this was an information item that came to us, and it's regarding the Nova Scotia-New Brunswick reliability tie. And I'm not sure if you recall, but back, it was a while ago, we had our, we hosted our meeting at the Fire Hall, and they did a great presentation at the Fire Hall there for us. But anyways, they reached an important milestone for Nova Scotia Power as they registered a Class One environmental assessment to Nova Scotia Environment and Climate Change for the construction and operation of the Nova Scotia portion of the Nova Scotia-New Brunswick reliability intertie. The environmental assessment is an important process that demonstrates the diligence in evaluating and addressing any environmental risk as part of the project. So today, conceptual engineering has been completed for the project, as well as geotechnical investigations and preparation for filing of the environmental assessment. So this, a little update has been in the council package for anyone to review, which is available online.
Anybody have any questions for Linda? If not, we'll move on to seven point two, information communication, technology uses and policies.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the next two items kind of tie hand, actually, they do tie hand in hand. So the first one we're going to go over, seven point two, is information communication technology usage policy. This was a policy that we adopted back June twentieth of twenty-twenty-two. And we had to review it due to the other policy that we're going to talk next. But we noticed there were some grammar changes we wanted to make. They are highlighted in yellow, they're attached in the package. We can go into detail with that at our council meeting in two weeks. But the changes that we would like to make, which are just simple grammar issues that we noted, are inside the council package for a review and hopefully approval at our council meeting.
Any, any questions for Linda? If not, thank you, Linda, we'll move on to seven point three.
Okay, thank you, we're. So now, what we have is our technology devices policy. This policy here was brought forward regarding, there's one large change we need to make, make sure this as well. So this one here, there were some grammar issues in here as well. But at the very, on page four of five, there's a large change when we talk about employees and layoff, retired, or leaving employment of the town of Oxford, which also includes councillors as well. When they leave employment of the town of Oxford for any reason, they, they must turn in all devices to the town. So for proper disposal of the municipal property. So because there's, there's some sensitive items that may be on the tablets or cell phones and, and things like that. So proper disposal of any municipal property needs to be taken care of. So it's explained into this policy that is inside the council package that we're looking to get approved at our next council meeting as well, under technologies, devices policy. But the large item I do want to bring to your attention is on page four of five. Have time to look at that and review that, but we'll describe further at our next council meeting.
Thank you, Linda, anybody have any questions? If not, we move to seven point four, we're going to call on Mayor Henry. He gives you a report.
Oh, well. Basically, we have a municipal housing report, means report, and issued by the Department of Municipal Affairs. I, I took some exceptions with one of the, some of the facts stated in it. They claim that our population has gone down. And a lot of the information they're basing, what they're saying in here is, is based on a decreased population. I believe that when we last sent those down there was, a lot of people in town did not bother filling it out. And I don't believe the census was written wrong, it really, it really can't be. We just heard tonight that there's fifty-nine new people living in town, from a source that would know. Anything in this does not take that into account. A lot of it, I think, is done prior to COVID, or the booming population we're now experiencing. It's a very nice report, I understood most of it, but I don't think it's really relevant. Because like you said, I think our population has gone, it's gone quite badly, even for what we're projecting it's going to. I think they said we need fifteen new houses before twenty-twenty-six.
Jack.
Sure. I think basically, the thing is expired. One problem they had was they sent out a survey, we posted on the town website and our Facebook site, asking people to do this survey for the study. Nobody did, there were very few people from Oxford participated, we, there were less than twenty. I don't know, there wasn't many, because I filled it in, I know two or three, two or three of the things I, I stated or quoted in this. So I don't think there was a lot of people.
Do they quote the numbers as far as enrolled in school?
No, they don't touch on the school, and we know the school was filling out.
Yes.
So, I don't know, I mean, it's here, it's in your package. It's a slog to read, because a lot of it's in the jargon that people that are in this business would understand very quickly, flipping back and forth, but we need more housing, and luckily, it's happening, so. But not the numbers they projected, we've surpassed it already, yeah. So, can't say more, it's pretty all that. It's in your package if you want to read it.
Anybody get any questions from Mayor Henry? If not, I'd like to thank you for your presentation, your report, and I'd like to move on to seven point five. Municipal res- registration, EPR for PPP, Linda?
Very good, I'm muted, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is just where we've been talking about EPR and PPP in the last couple of meetings that we've had. This is an update for municipalities about the transition to extended producer responsibility for packaging, paper products and packaging-like products, which is also known as EPR for PPP. Over the next coming weeks, they divert Nova Scotia, will be providing municipalities with further information about the registration process. So we've already passed a motion to opt in, so we will be registering for this process. This update is included in the council package, which is online. And you'll noted that there's some frequently asked questions that the public may be interested in. It's on the second and third page. It talks about how municipalities can determine whether they should opt in or out, what required to register, just different things, how would the pro use the data? Anyone that's interested or curious about this, definitely, you can either reach out or to review the, the item that's in the council package.
Anybody have any questions for Linda? If not, I'd like to thank you, and move on to snow, nice management. Nick Burden presented.
Thank you. So there's a few changes that I would like to make, there's snow and ice management policy. So the first one is under the policy statement, so it says, snow and ice management operations will commence after five to ten seconds. And I would like to change that to two to five, just allows me guys that are quicker and assault out. I think it will all go to watch. And the next one. Is under major storms, so stirring major snowstorm crews will attempt to make at least one lane of the following streets open. And I'd like to change it from Bowery Street to Highway two oh four, which is from Bowery Street to the town was a vertical road. And the next one is.
You wanted to add Duke Street to that, too?
Yes.
Yes, Duke Street, sorry. And priority streets. So it's a bare pavement policy. So the town snow clearing crews will attempt to create a bare pavement condition. Within twelve hours of the following snowstorm up to thirty centimeters of fallen streets. So I'd like to change is this Foundry Street from intersection of water and Foundry. To the corner of Foundry and Bertrand Road. The town owned property. So town staff may have necessary steps to minimize public hazards due to snow and ice conditions on town owned lease property. So it's public parking lots, theater, we can scratch out and look visible. And the, my theory seven is the town map. So we would have to add seventy ways to this map because it's not on there. And is it possible?
All right. Next, the Winter Bed Parking.
So Winter Bed Parking is now in effect and will go until, I believe, some time ago.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Burr?
Is this something we'll be voting on at the next council meeting, I assume?
So he's, he's requesting amendments. Here.
Yeah.
So that should shift it up in the council.
Yes.
Would like to table that to.
Sure.
For council meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick, for your reports, Linda. And.
When is the next council meeting?
The next council meeting is a two weeks from tonight.
Should we have a. We could have made a snowfall before that and some of those changes could help residents, you know, navigating streets and so on and safety. So. Should we have a special council meeting to adapt just those changes?
Could we do a mail or a.
Email.
Email.
Amendment.
Poll on that. And then we. Give it pre-approval.
Yes, we can do a consensus as well, as long as, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we should do that because I think they're good changes and I think it'll help people. So.
No. Uh, consent, sorry. I forgot. Well, I was going to say there's a consensus here that we make these changes.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
If I may say, if I may say one thing, we may make a motion if you choose to accept those change, to recommend council to accept those changes into the policy. And then there, then it pretty much streamlines it for the council meeting if you, if you choose.
I'll make that work.
Woke by. Mr. Jones seconded by Mrs. McNaught. That we accept the amendment request.
That will be recommended from committee of the hold for council to accept.
All those things, if anything, I. I remind that name mostly carries. Before we go off for adjournment. Let me throw a little plug in for room state. Okay, they are at the Senate town. They're not marching. So they're gonna have the ceremony same as pre-COVID. So and they have to start at ten forty-five. After the ceremony is done at the Senate town, the region will be open for coffee, tea, hot talking for the kids, chips. That night, like six is meet and greet. Six o'clock. Going to be sudden. The meal is fifteen dollars for. Anybody. It is no charge for our veterans. The plug for the Santa, transfer site. They'll be closed Saturday, veteran level for the winter stay.
Comment? I ask about last time it's closed Saturday. They opened on Wednesday. We paid someone it out for, for vehicles showing up. That's why it's not open the next year. Just for clarifications.
Well.
Yeah.
But it's still open Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
Before I call for adjournment, I'd like to ask if there's any other further business to be discussed. Aaron and I, I declare this meeting closed.
Well done.